Are you recording already? This is your.
Yeah, because it's automatic reports. We don't forget. I don't want to stop it, so. Where is it? Right here. Does that work?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring the Watertown Town Council Finance Subcommittee meeting to order. Sue, are you able to do a roll call?
Yes. Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Ken Demers.
Here.
Robert De Sina. Jeffrey Desmaris.
Here.
Anthony Debona. Louis Raza. Robert Retalik. And Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Sue, I think Herm is also here via phone.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we're here to hear a presentation from the Board of Ed for our schools. And I would like to hand this meeting over to Rob, if she's available.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, the Town Council. Thanks for the opportunity to present the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget for the Watertown Public School District that has been unanimously approved by the Watertown Board of Education. For those that do not know me, I'm Rob Mikowski. I've been on the board for five and a half years, and I'm currently the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee. Tonight, you'll be hearing from Superintendent Dr. Allison Villanueva, who will walk us through the proposed budget, the district's financial and moral obligations, the impact of those obligations on our budget and our strategy to continuing to strengthen and build upon our foundation, the focus being to maintain a safe, challenging learning environment for every student and to afford each student the opportunity to achieve their fullest potential. Dr. Villanueva?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mikowski, and good evening Chairwoman Rosa, Vice Chair Ramsey, and members of the Town Council. It's very nice to be with you this evening to share FY22 budget for the Board of Education. Ms. Catania, if you're online there, are you able to share the screen for the presentation? Thank you very much. So we'll just go right to the second slide there. And I would like to thank also the Watertown Board of Education Chairwoman Prati, Vice Chair Ms. Wilk, as well as our Secretary Ms. Rinaldi and all members of the Board of Education for their work with me in this short period of time to get our FY22 budget prepared as well as passed and recommended. And we'll go to the next slide there. In addition, I'd like to thank our building administrators, as well as our district administrators here in Watertown, just for all of their work and doing all of the fine detail as we continue to put this budget together. And we'll move forward there, and we can actually skip this budget here because I know the Town Council is very aware of what the budget timeline is for our town. So I'd like to begin first by sharing about our students and our current budget landscape for FY22. As you know, each year, the Watertown Public Schools budget is the very vehicle that essentially allows us to do anything and everything in our school district. So the budget provides us resources, the time, the people, anything really that provides the important experiences our students take part of every day. And those experiences are rooted in more than just listening and reading and writing and mathematics. These experiences are specifically rooted in how to cultivate digital literacy, as well as a social emotional awareness about themselves, as well as the world around them, and how to become ultimately aware of not only their community at a local level, but also the global world around them. And so this slide, ultimately, that black center circle there is all that we do to try to encompass those characteristics in our school. And we'll go to the next slide there. The Watertown Public Schools' mission and vision and strategic plan is specifically set on moving our students forward and onward. The graduation cap in the top left-hand corner there encompasses it all. It's not just knowledge, it's also the characteristics and the skills that we want so that our students can give back to their communities and contribute to what becomes more apparent every day, a very global and wide society. The school's strategic plan is rooted in the puzzle pieces, and that's that image in the bottom left, that allow this to happen. And those pieces have to come together in order for the opportunities to be provided for our children. And as I mentioned at the beginning, all of these opportunities are directly driven by the school's budget and budget priorities. This year, as we continue to move forward with COVID, very real in our lives, the budget is focused on steadying the ship after a very unsteady year and ultimately fortifying the foundation that's necessary in order for us to continue to grow and to mitigate potential risks that may come out next year. So we'll go to the next slide there. The budget process is a collaborative one. It starts back in the fall, and the district strictly adheres to a zero-based budgeting process. We do our due diligence, and we dive into the historical data and the past budget history and key factors like enrollment, our goals, our focuses, we have our school focus we have for our schools, sorry, and how we can move forward in our strategic improvement plan is ultimately what drives our budget decisions and every dollar that we put towards next year's budget. And so we'll move to the next slide there. And then I'm going to pause after this one in just a moment. It may sound familiar, but the schools are deeply committed to the three areas of focus: Watertown Cares, which is directly connected to families and academics; Watertown Learns, which is directly connected to students and staff; and Watertown Leads, which is directly connected to our students and our town partners. So at this point, and we'll go to the next slide one more, this year's total recommended Board of Education budget is a total of $48,439,863, with a total increase of $1,861,273 or 4%. Actually, I won't pause. I'll keep on going, but if you would like to pause me, feel free to stop, stop me and jump right in. The largest cost, and we'll actually go to the next slide there, the largest cost, and this is of no surprise, 76% of Watertown's overall budget is committed to salaries and benefits. We have multiple bargaining units altogether, and seeing as education is firmly founded on the people, we are a people business, it's not surprising that 76% of our overall budget is dedicated to the human capital of our district. Our second-largest expenditure is solely dedicated to special education costs. And for FY22, 13% of Watertown's overall budget is strictly for special education costs. What remains are the skinnier pie pieces that you can see there, so maintenance and utilities at 2% and 3%, respectively. This is where we make sure we heat our schools, we keep the lights on, and we make sure our students are safely in functioning facilities. Next, we have transportation at 4% of our overall budget, and we are in charge of transporting our students to and from school safely. And then the last and the skinniest slice of the pie is for everything else, is what I call it, and that's at 2%. And this is the slice where we push programming forward and to build these opportunities and experiences for students in connection to our district's strategic plan. So the next slide here, I do want us to take a closer look at our second-largest expenditure, which I mentioned was special education costs. In one year alone, we've increased by 3% just in special education costs. That's an overall dollar increase of $1,808,204 just in special education. Now, Watertown Public Schools currently has about 16% of our overall student population receiving special education services in some way. That's approximately 450 students of our 2,600 or so students altogether, who receive some sort of special education service. So some students may simply receive support in the classroom with some additional resources and materials, while other students may be outplaced outside of Watertown altogether in learning environments that are not within the community here. We offer a wide continuum of services in special education, and what drives this number is ultimately all of the resources and services that we offer our students. For outplacements alone, and those are students who are receiving services outside of our schools, we can range anywhere from $65,000 upwards to $200,000 per student, depending on what services they're receiving outside of our district. And the materials and resources that we rely upon in special education also come at a premium cost. And it's our obligated duty, as well as our moral and legal duty, to provide appropriate programming and the funding for all of our students. So special education costs also include, in our community, our parochial schools, so St. Mary's as well as St. John's, and any tuition costs that we may pay for students who attend any of our tech schools or our magnet schools like Caner and Nanowog. It also pays for the continuum of special education services that we have in district here, our programs like Cubden or Rise or Wings, and soon you're going to hear about our upcoming high school program, which we are potentially going to be calling SOAR. And also special education, our department's special education also covers all of our nursing costs as well. So whether a student comes down to the nurse's office with a wiggly tooth or a bloody nose or maybe something much more serious like COVID-19 symptoms, that also comes from a special education department. And we also sometimes find students who find themselves homeless. And in those cases, our special education department also provides what they need in those times of need, based on the McKinney-Binto legislation. So in terms of everything I just shared there, and we'll go to the next slide, although you hear that the overall budget increase for FY22 is $1,861,273, of those dollars, $1,808,204 are all dedicated strictly to special education. What that means is that of that overall 4% increase, only $53,000 really is left over for all the other slices of the pie. And of course, there's no way that $53,000, $53,000 is going to cover everything. And so what we've done is, we've gone in, and if we can go to the next slide there, and we have found areas of savings, areas of efficiencies, or just straight reductions in the amount of about $815,000 to continue to be able to push any programming forward and to keep the very people in our district who do the work whole and in place. So I am going to pause there for a moment, just because that was a lot of information. And if there are any questions or thoughts or areas of clarification that I can offer, I'd be happy to do so.
I do have a couple of quick questions on some areas you've touched. Regarding the special education, what's the reasoning behind the cost of the nurses being part of special education versus any other line item?
So nurses have, in the past and historically, been part of our special education cost here in the department because of the services that they provide. I'm not quite sure how other districts do it, but from the few that I do know of, I do know that nurses are also part of the special education department costs.
Okay, and I just know over the last seven or so years that I've been on the Town Council, every year, a lot of the increases in the Board of Ed budget are related to the special education each and every year. And now we're reaching the 13% of the overall budget. Do you know how that compares to any other town similar in our size?
Absolutely, and I can certainly come back with something much more specific. But in terms of just special education prevalence rates across the state of Connecticut, we continue to have a rising trend across all of our districts. The last I took a look, we were ranging between 11% and 13% increases in a lot of our districts around. So again, I can be specific about our neighboring districts, but all of us are seeing an increase in special education prevalence rates.
And the last question I have for now is, you mentioned that the outside services for a student could range anywhere from $65,000 to 200-plus. What types of services kind of cause that higher end, 200-plus thousand?
Absolutely. So part of our special education process is to identify the least restrictive environment of learning for all of our, for our students who are eligible for spent services. And least restrictive environment is not always the same place for each child. So depending on what their needs are, whether there may be a learning disability or it may be an intense emotional disturbance or a severely autistic student, that environment may need to be different from what the regular classroom is to what we offer in district in a specialized classroom. And it may need to be outside of our school district in a facility that is specifically geared towards those higher and more intensive needs. So the more intensive the facility is that provides the services outside, I would strongly say that there is a correlation to the increase in cost there. And so when we can offer more programming in district, although cost is not something that should be inhibiting us from providing programming for any of our spent students, when we can provide the programming in district, it does reduce the cost of putting more students out in more of those specialized facilities outside of our district.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Superintendent, the $815,000, I would like to say, was identified by you and the board members. We've had past problems in Watertown with the word "found." So it would be nice to say you identified those areas.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Yes, and they have been identified.
Great.
Any other questions from the Town Council at this point?
I have a quick one. In terms of this cost going forward, obviously, this is, seems to be an increasing cost each year. It seems to become a larger percentage of the budget, and each year it is a higher dollar amount. Are there any federal programs that we're aware of that can be looked into in terms of assisting us, especially if it reaches maybe certain dollar or percentage thresholds of our budget that can help offset some of this cost?
Wonderful question. We are continuously looking at any possible grant opportunities that are out there, and we will, of course, take them if they fall in line with our needs. At this point, our major grant providers for any of our special education costs is the IDEA grant, which will help offset a lot of the costs for our parochial schools, as well as some of our special education funding within district. And then the larger part is the excess cost grant, which does not give us a 100% coverage of our special education costs. But an excess of 75% of what we spend on special education is reimbursed to us through that grant. That grant has been relatively, I'd say, little peaks and valleys of how much we've been reimbursed over the past six to seven years. This year, I believe, because we had such an increase, we did increase a little bit more in that grant, but again, not 100%. So to answer your question, yes, we're always looking out for those grants. We have not found one, and there's that word "found." We've also not been provided one by federal or by state to help offset these costs at this point.
With some of the costs, some of the monies coming from the American Rescue Act, would some of that, could some of that be applicable to these particular costs here? Are they specified for COVID only, or they would be, could be applied to special education as well, whatever costs needs we might have?
Correct. So the American Rescue Act, and I'll just make sure that I'm thinking of the same one, is the stimulus package?
That's right, yes.
Yes, yes. So those, unlike the monies that are going to come from the American Rescue Act that will go to municipalities as well as to the school district, we have very strict parameters around what we can spend our stimulus monies on. Some of it will be able to go towards special education, because there was quite an uproar from our school districts to the government just to say, "We need help with this." So they have earmarked a small portion that can be put towards special education. Based on our current needs right now, I believe our stimulus and our, whatever we do get, we have not been given a firm number at this point, will help us with this year's current situation, and we may be able to put some towards next year, but not all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Villanueva?
Yes.
If I, if I may interject just for a second, Mr. Demare, you raise a good question. The other thing to take into account are, a lot of these, a good portion of these expenses are unanticipated. We could have students move into district in the middle of the year or beginning of year, and so that added student population was never in our sights for, during the budget development process. And so even if we are able to recruit funds from another source, whether it be state or federal, it's still unanticipated, and it's still, you know, hits the budget. So just one more item and one other factor to take into account of kind of what the district is trying to manage to.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski, and I think to speak to the unanticipated portion of it, because we certainly don't want to continuously be hit with unanticipated things each year, is that I strongly and firmly believe that if we appropriately fund what we have now, then when the unanticipated costs do arrive, and if they do, then we have a closer launching off pad to try to cover those costs. When we're already underbudgeted in an area that we know requires more funding and we get unanticipated, then the gap is just too wide to be able to try to, to close. Thank you. So we'll move to the next slide there. The next few slides are ultimately dedicated to sharing what is in our school budget in addition to our rise in special education. So we'll move to the next slide there. Okay, so as I mentioned, the wide range of costs associated with special education, and one way to not only provide the programming for our students who are in district, but also to help mitigate costs of potential outplacement is to expand our intensive special education program into the high school. So as children, as children grow, so must our programs. And as our students have been growing and getting older, they are now ready to move into our high school. And so we are earmarking monies towards building a WHS special education intensive program that we hope to call SOAR at the high school with a dedicated social worker and two special education teachers. This program also has the potential to bring back some of our students who are currently in district outplacements to have them return to their home community and be serviced by our schools. So there is a potential of saving around $280,000 by creating this program within our district. In addition, expanding our trade courses up at the high school provides a wider range of, range of choices at the high school for our students to choose and prepare for college, career, and beyond the K-12 academic worlds. That is definitely a need that we have at the moment. And speaking of our areas of focus, Watertown Leads is that one puzzle piece that connects our town as well as our school district. And so to directly feed into our strategic plan's focus on building partnerships with our Watertown community, we've also earmarked funds to share a human resource specialist that we can share between the schools and the town. And this is very helpful, because we're both experiencing need in this area, and the fact that we can move forward together in this opportunity is, I think, a wonderful opportunity to take. So in addition to that, what is also baked into our budget, and if we can go to the next slide there, it's important to continue the monitoring of class sizes. Now, if any of you have children in our school district, you may have heard the best practice of keeping our class sizes small. And so keeping an eye on our enrollment is something that we do all the time, and I just wanted to give a bit of an example here. So right now at Polk in fourth grade, we have five classrooms of fourth grade, and in those, the average class size is 20 students. Now, if at some point we are put in a place where we need to reduce our faculty and we take away one of those sections of those classes, immediately those class sizes of 20 increase to 25. And the more that we hit our personnel in terms of budget, those class sizes start to balloon very quickly. And we know that learning in very large class sizes is not the best experience for our students nor our families. And so we keep a very close eye on that. So when I say keeping our people whole, that is something very important to us. So if we can move to the next slide there. In addition, and I think coming off the heels of COVID, not just our schools are feeling this, but businesses around our community, as well as perhaps even the Town Council, technology has become an absolute necessity in our lives. And right now, our school district is working off of a 1-gig technology infrastructure, if I may say it that way. And we do need to quite badly move to a 10-gig infrastructure that can handle the demand that our students are putting on the system, as well as just the speed of our internet, as well as how we can access technology. And so the best analogy I've heard is, would you rather be on a one-lane highway or a 10-lane highway? And in order to make that move, we have to start putting foundational pieces in place in order to be able to actually move the infrastructure over. Now, when technology infrastructure doesn't move over, things like having absolute down outages can happen. And when that happens, it can be, well, it could be a couple of minutes, or it can be days. And when technology's down, boy, everything goes down. That entire financial system or whatever it may be can go down. So this is an area that needs to be addressed and needs to grow, and so we need to do this in phases. In addition to that, when technology is not running at its maximum capacity or at least at some sort of optimum speed or way, we are susceptible to viruses and things of that nature as well. And that is also something that the schools experienced not too long ago, and so we need to mitigate those risks as well. So that's another piece that is embedded within this year's budget, and a very important piece. The next slide there. And this one, I think, may hit home quite true to our Town Council members, as well as to our Board of Education members. Being elected officials in our community, you hear from the community, you hear from the people who live in Watertown. There has been a great demand from our parent population around what we are offering our students in the summer months in terms of not only support, but also an enrichment as we're coming off the heels of COVID, and as we continue to try to keep our schools as the gem of our community. And so in response to the large amount of parents who are coming out and looking for these enrichment programs or these programs in the summer that will really keep our students engaged, we are also baking into this budget a low-tuition-funded program through the summer. Now, I call it a low tuition, because everything else will be offset by the school district, and so that budget does fall in on our side. So as we move to the next slide here, these will look familiar to you. We obviously receive federal funds, and those federal funds are not able to be used towards our general operating budget items. So for salaries and benefits and that kind of stuff, that's not something we're supposed to do with those federal funds. This year, what is new is that we have received the ESER, the, it also came in under the CARES, which was COVID relief or emergency relief funds. So those were funds that came in with the parameter of, you really need to use some this year, as well as into fiscal year '22 and the year beyond it. And so we have spliced those funds to be able to move it into FY22, a portion of it at least. The next slide there then talks about our state funds. And here, probably most familiar to the Town Council are the education cost sharing funds. And that number, as we, we thought it would continue to increase with Governor Lamont's talk a couple of years ago, however, this year Governor Lamont did share in his budget that education cost sharing will remain flat and will not increase. And so that number has an asterisk beside it, as does the estimated excess cost, because they are estimated numbers at this point. And for those funds, those go towards the overall operating budget numbers of our Board of Education budget and do not hit the tax dollars of our people. So I just wanted to clarify that. It takes from the overall appropriation and provides that from those town funds. Um, it takes from the overall appropriation and provides that from those town funds, um, but does not, again, hit those tax dollars for our our people in Watertown. So if we go to the next slide there, just as a recap, the overall total proposed budget is forty-eight million four hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars. And that's an overall increase of one million eight hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars or four percent. And so I thank you for your time, and at this point, in the last few slides, um, there is a detailed summary of the line items and what the increases and decreases have been in order for us to get to the four percent increase. And if there are any questions, I will pause there and happy to answer and clarify.
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Dr. Villanueva.
Thank you.
Was anyone on the town council have any questions or comments at this time?
I I just have a quick uh request. Um, we received the the presentation in our packet, but uh there seems to be some slides, at least that were not in here. Uh, would we be able to receive a updated version of this so that the we can review each uh slide?
Absolutely, one hundred percent. I will um bring that up to Lisa's office first thing tomorrow morning.
I believe Lisa got the newest copy this afternoon, um, so she could probably send it to the town council.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a few questions. Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, uh, just a couple, couple of different questions. Um, on a few slides back, there was some cuts. Um, and it mentioned something about textbooks, but it looked like maybe it was covered by a grant. I just wanted to check to see that that's accurate. So you're not going to have to cut the use of certain textbooks or purchasing textbooks?
You are correct. So the SR two uh federal grant, where we are allowed to use some funds this year, as well as in the FY twenty-two year, uh, we are going to be covering those textbooks through that grant line.
Okay, great. And uh, do you know what the average class size is for high school classes and specifically English and history classes?
Uh, if we're getting as specific as English and history, I can come back to you with that specifically. Um, but by grade level, I have um an overall number of students. So in ninth grade, we have an overall total students of a hundred and eighty-six at this time. In tenth grade, a hundred and ninety-eight, in eleventh, two hundred and four students, and in twelfth grade, we have a hundred and eighty-three students.
Okay, and and then you know how many full-time teaching faculty you have at the high school?
And then I can also um get a more specific number for you.
Okay. Um, and how about AP classes that you'll be offering next year? Any idea of how many are you increasing the number, staying the same, decreasing?
So at this point, I believe we are staying the same with the number of AP courses that we are um that we are offering, but that is also based on enrollment as well. So we're going through that process right now of students choosing their courses and of that nature. So as we get that information, I can certainly share that with you as well. But I will circle back just on the number of teachers, uh, specifically in English and in us, you said, social studies?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And one last question. Um, did I think that I I I think I know this, but I just want to make sure, are we doing the the um the college credit program, the dual credit, I think it's called, where they can take high school classes and get credit at some Connecticut universities?
Uh, it may be the AP that you're thinking of, or you may be thinking of E C E of or UConn courses, is that?
Yeah, it might be the, yeah, it might be the E C E, where I know you can take, you can take certain high school school classes, and it'll count for credit, and maybe UConn or any of the state schools, I'm not sure.
Right. So just so that I don't misspeak, what I'll do is I'll double check just exactly which ones we have running, and then I'll get back to you on that, Ms. Ryan.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Any other comments from the town council?
Um, I have a quick one. Um, uh, just to, because we've we're still dealing with COVID, and we may have some uh, still some issues with COVID in the coming uh school year. Um, has, was that taken into account when looking at the budget? Because obviously COVID has been a a major issue for the current year budget. Um, was uh was that looked at, and is there flexibility if it does indeed become an issue where we still have to have a certain hybrid uh uh classes for some of the different grade levels?
It has been taken into account. Um, this year we had additional personnel due to COVID because of the remote situation, as well as the hybrid situation, and just because of all of the new mitigating factors. Next year's budget, I have removed the personnel piece uh from there. However, there are funds built in for things like P P E and sanitizing wipes and things of that nature. Um, so I would say a portion of the mitigating mitigating those risks for COVID are in there. Um, but the people part, I did pull them out from next year.
Is there any technology considerations um for that? Obviously, we had a lot of uh technology uh increases that had to take place because everyone went to uh remote learning for a period of time. I I again, I'm very hopeful, and it looks like uh we're in a good trend line to not have to worry about that so much in the new kind of coming school year. Um, but we just don't know enough about, you know, how this is playing out long term. And Mike, I'm just concerned, I want to make sure that that we have that sort of like in the back of our minds that this might be something that we might have to adjust to if there's a another wave or a mutation or something like that, that creates uh a need to to have to deal with this uh unfortunate uh remote learning situation.
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up. And that was that one slide with the colorful bars and the big round circle of the one gig to ten gig. Um, that technology piece is embedded in our budget um so that we have, so that we can continue to maintain our one-to-one devices. We can continue to maintain the uh technical devices that our teachers will need um so that we can continue to have that foundation as we move forward. Because at any given point in time, if we do need to flip into remote, we will be able to do so.
And and I think along those lines, this may not be a direct budgetary question, but then again, it might be somewhat related to it. Um, the students have uh half-day Wednesdays remote um for this school year. Is that something that they plan to continue into the fall, or is that, are we just going to go back to if everything goes well, go back to regular five-days learning?
So if everything goes well, and and I'll say this with with air quotes here, then we should be going back to um the regular five-day learning plan. Uh, but right now, week by week, we ultimately meet um not only as area superintendents, but also as an administrative team to take a look at what our protocol is and having our students back in our buildings. And I'm I'm not surprised, I won't be surprised if we continue to do this right up until the opening of next year, just to see how our learning model is going to look, or what our learning model is going to look like. Um, I can't say specifically whether Wednesday remotes will be in place or not. Um, but I do see that there is a very positive trend with all of these COVID vaccines being rolled out with this very low school in transmission, uh, low numbers of that, um, as well as, you know, just there's a huge resurgence and or surge for wanting to get back to normal. So I think trying to get back to normal is everybody's goal at this point. What that looks like, we haven't quite defined yet.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Along the lines of the costs that the town incurred for COVID-related um situations and cleaning and all that, were there any costs that the Board of Ed incurred that were kind of COVID-related but weren't um reimbursed or somehow um supplemented by either state or federal funds?
Yes, so at the start of, um, so perhaps at the start of the pandemic, uh FEMA came out pretty strong to say uh that they would cover a lot of the COVID expenses that was going to take place. A lot of districts, if not all of the districts, partnered up with their municipalities uh to to make COVID-specific lists. And then they were under the impression, we were all under the impression that FEMA would take a lot of that um burden of cost away. What quickly happened after these lists were created and districts and municipalities came forward with their COVID expenditures, FEMA backed off very quickly and said, oh, no, we're not actually covering those costs. We are specifically only going to cover medically incurred costs or 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 things that have to do with, like, the medical field. Um, and so, and then they said, well, we can offer you some P P E, so here's a thousand masks, take a thousand masks. So what happened, I think, early on was that what we knew we would need to spend was not covered by FEMA. So then what happened after that was we had the grants like CARES and SR one come out. Um, and those were only portions of what we thought would be covered by FEMA. And so the COVID costs continued to incur. Um, and then SR two came out, but then they gave parameters strictly around how that could be spent as well. So I guess to go back to your original question of were there COVID costs that were incurred but weren't necessarily? They were all COVID costs. Were they offset by FEMA? They were not. And are they fully covered by CARES or SR one or SR two? They are not either.
Thank you. Any other questions from the town council? During none, I just want to thank the superintendent and the Board of Ed for uh giving us this presentation, and I just wanted to remind the town council members that at our next regular town council meeting, we'll be discussing um the budget as a whole and hopefully moving onto a vote from there.
No, that's it. I'll I'll be sending a message to council people to find out if they need any documents other than the update on on what we saw tonight. But just to make sure everyone has all of the PowerPoint presentations we've seen, and if there are any questions before our next meeting, try and get those ahead of time and get answers. So that will be all set when we meet the next time.
Right.
If I may, um, just in closing, I I just, you know, want to um thank you for inviting us. Um, Mary Ann, the rest of the town council, just want to thank you for your continued support. Um, you know, we're all in in this situation together. It's it's certainly not easy what the past year has has done to our town fiscally and in other areas. So I just wanted to, you know, again, express, you know, our deepest gratitude for um the open communication and and the support from everybody on the council. Thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, thank you, uh, Rob. We're gonna need your, obviously, the school's support when it comes to budget time and getting it passed. Um, so we might be able to set up some kind of a a brainstorming session on how to get this kind of information out to the public for those that have not watched this evening. Um, we need to reach out so they understand why the figure is is as you have presented. But we we can talk about that down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Stay safe.
Thank you.